Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our September 26 Fayetteville City Council meeting to order. Welcome all of those who are joining us in the audience as well as those who join us virtually. At this time, we ask that Pastor Michael Mathis from the Mission Field Ministries, if you would come to the podium to give us our prayer. Ask that all would rise for the invocation and please remain standing to repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Evening Pastor.
Evening. Almighty God, you alone are God. And before you ever formed the earth, the mountains, and the world, you alone are God from everlasting to everlasting. Father, you set our iniquities before you and the secret sins are in your, are in the light of your countenance. Oh God, we ask for forgiveness this evening. We come giving you thanks, God, for everything that you're doing, especially our leadership. Thank you for the longevity of the leadership of Mayor Mitch Koven and his wonderful staff and team that worked so diligently and hard to make this city a city that all of us can be proud of. We're especially grateful, Almighty God, in how you keep your warring angels around all of the first responders as they willingly put their lives in harm's way to protect the citizens of this city. We thank you for that. And now, Lord, the agenda has been set. So once again, we ask you now, we beseech thee that thou will endow us, endow the council with the fresh enourding of wisdom that they might execute the things that have been written down tonight. We especially lay hold of the $97 million, oh God, that is coming toward this city that the voters will be in favor of. We thank you now in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Mathis, thank you so much, sir. You want to spend just a moment to tell us a little bit about your ministry? You're certainly a friend of the council and you've been here before, but can you let us know about that?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm honored that you would say such kind words about my character and leadership for truly I strive along with my team at Mission Field to exhibit unity and love for this city and to be a team player. Last time, when I was asked to do this, I kind of fumbled up with my words. And so this time, I want to make it clear that I say what is in my heart. As the senior pastor of Mission Field Ministries, I'd like for the city council to know that we appreciate you very much and our ministry efforts to the people of Cumberland County is a direct reflection of our love and support for this city. At Mission Field, we have a can-do attitude. Thank you, sir.
All right. We love that. So, thank you Pastor. Thank you Pastor Mathis. At this time, we will move to our announcements to have Council Member here and then Council Member Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give a few moments to echo and to salute one of our great giants of our community that passed away on Thursday, September the 22nd, round about 11:00 a.m. And that is our very own Dr. Wilson Alexander Lacy. My dear friend, Dr. Lacy, he loved our city. He loved our, his family, and he loved his church. Brother Wilson, he loved uplifting people. He was a great encourager. Regardless of how he was feeling in his body, he still was able to encourage strength to others and make them feel better regardless of how he was feeling. He was such, he was just my dear, dear friend. He served our city well. On the PWC board, he served our city well as the chairman of the Martin Luther King Jr. Park. And also, he served our city well retiring from the Cumberland County School System. Dr. Lacy, he believed in service. Our friend, Brother Lacy, he also stood on the four principles of manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. He was, he was an easy guy to talk to and he was, it was easy for him to care for others. And so tonight, I thank you for giving me an opportunity to salute my dear friend that he will be very much missed. And for those of you that follow me on social media, you will be able to find his home-going service and his community memorial tribute, which will be Thursday of this week and Friday of this week. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council.
Thank you, Councilmember here. Certainly, we echo that and sentiments and sympathy go out to the Lacy family. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to briefly highlight two entities within the city. That up to first, the Fayetteville Cumberland Arts Council. This weekend, we had the honor to bring back a nation of parades which we had missed due to COVID. And so, congratulations to the Arts Council and the community for showing, showing up in such a beautiful way. And I think it put to bed what we hear is there, there's nothing to do in Fayetteville because we, we saw a lot of families. We saw very inclusive of all ages, all, anyone could participate. And I do want to thank the Arts Council for, and the board, which is a working board, for their commitment to ensure that International Folk Festival was a success. Second, thank you. Secondly, as we approach, thank you, sir. As we approach New Year's Eve, we decided last year that we would allow Cool Springs Downtown District to make it, make it, make it real for us. And they did exceedingly and above what we, we could have possibly imagined. And over the weekend, Cool Springs Downtown District received an international award as a part of the International Downtown Association for place make, a placemaking award for our New Year's Eve spectacular event. And so, we are being recognized internationally for our first New Year's Eve spectacular. And so, once again, you cannot say there's nothing to do in Fayetteville. You cannot say that when we do do something, we do it. And so, I do want to thank the Cool Springs Downtown District, the board, which is also a working board as well, for making this happen and really making us look good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, Councilmember Ingram has a presentation for Ms. Kelsey, Mr. Shannon, Ms. Shannon and Mr. Kelsey Battle.
Thank you. So, I'm going to go ahead and ask them to come on up. And as they come up, I'm going to go ahead and start to read. Kelsey and Shannon Battle are natives of Fayetteville, North Carolina. They have been married for 28 years with five kids, three girls and two boys, ranging from age 27 to 15 years of age. Kelsey is an alumni of 71st High School and Liberty University with a degree in psychology. Kelsey served the United States Army for 11 years. Kelsey is the CFO of Family Services of America Mental Health Agency and owner of All American Construction and Restoration. Shannon, the I Can Lady, Battle is an alumni of Fayetteville, I'm sorry, Westover High School and the illustrious Fayetteville State University, Bronco Pride, and Liberty University. Shannon has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, master's degree in sociology, and professional counseling. She is the owner of Family Services of America Foster Care and outpatient therapy agency and licensed mental health counseling supervisor. Shannon Battle is also a general contractor for All American Construction and Restoration, where that brings us to why we are here today. The Battles are highly invested in community development, which led to the purchase of a block of 11 blighted homes built in 1938. The Battles fully renovated them, over 1,100 square feet, three bedrooms, two baths, with modern fixtures. You will find granite countertops, hardwood flooring, stainless steel appliances as upgraded fixtures. Shannon and Kelsey took no shortcuts, building quality homes that would not have put their, they would not have put their families in. Their son, Kelton Battle, a sophomore at Fayetteville State University, was lead foreman on the project. As a result of cleaning up the area, the home values have increased, crime has been reduced, and community is satisfied with the outcome. To Mr. and Mrs. Battle, in recognition of your exemplary efforts and accomplishments, which have been a great benefit to the community, your community spirit and interests have helped make our city a better place to live, play, and recreate. And I will come down now and give you your certificates. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
And I ask Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin to come down and help me because she's, we, we supported them with the ribbon cutting of the homes. And after we present the certificates, they'll speak more about the project. So you'll get a better understanding of where they are.
Thank you, Shaquilla Council, everyone here. It was a tough project. We are very grateful that it's over. And we're excited about our next project, that we are getting ready to embark rebuilding townhomes in the same area. And then we're getting ready to do another project on Holly Street. Initially, we were doing this to help the community in terms of kids who are aging out of foster care because that is near and dear to us. And we just needed to find suitable housing. And then from there, a company contacted us. They said they needed transitional housing. So it was just all playing out. We had a plan, but you know, you have a plan until you start walking it out, it lands, you know, wherever it's supposed to be. So we're satisfied with the outcome now. And we just thank you for the support that you all have provided for us, the endeavors that you are doing to make our city the can-do city that's attractive to people from all walks. We encourage black entrepreneurship to develop, to build, to do whatever it takes to make your city, put your stamp on it. You're really not doing an effect in your city if your city doesn't bleed your DNA. So you can make, you know, you can say a lot, but you know, you're going to have to put action with it. And you're going to have to be willing to take risks. Get behind people who want to do things. When you have your council members who are trying to push endeavors, they, they're just one, you know, they're one person in your district. Align with it. See how you can fit with it. And then see how you can make things great by doing it together. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. Now, and I will add, when I first got on council, I noticed that it was a fight to get minority developers in the door and to get them to even be recognized or get them the support that they needed. And so I said, I tried to sit back and figure out, okay, well, how could I bring attention to our minority developers? And so I said, well, I'm just going to put them in front of everybody and let them see.
...
Oh, okay. Yeah, what they were saying too. But, so yeah. And so I made it a point to ensure that wherever, whenever, our minority developers-
Excuse me, Councilmember Ingram. Can, can someone please mute your phone?
I don't think she knows what she's, she's trying, y'all.
All right. Can they step outside while they work that out? Oh, that's Shannon. Okay. All right. I got you.
Um, yeah.
All right, Councilmember.
No, yeah. So I think when we have developers that are actually speaking to the needs of the city, we need to, we need to invest and we need to get behind them and support them 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Thank you to the Battles for your investment in the community. Keep up the good work. Council, at this time, we'll move into the city manager's report. Mr. Manager? Got to report. Sounds good. Item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. Council, remember the amendment that was requested, which was to move item 10.03 up to 8.01A. So can we have a motion to approve with those?
Mr. Mayor.
Other modifications? Yes, Councilmember Ingram.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, the agenda with the modifications of changing item 10.0, 10.03 to be labeled as item 10.0, I'm sorry, 8.01A.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve with the exceptions as mentioned. Is there a second?
One more concern, Mayor. I want to make sure I'm on the same page. We're just approving the agenda. We're still going to do the items on the consent.
Correct. All right. So the second by Councilmember Benevente. Discussion on the motion. All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve with those modifications. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous of those voting. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the consent. Councilmember here had a concern and then Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Yes, sir. I would like to pull item 7.04 for a public hearing.
All right. And Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. For 7.01 and 7.02, I would like to pull that item for a public hearing as well.
Okay. Councilmember Benevente.
Let's just play the second of those motions.
All right. Let me put it in form of a motion. So is this a motion, Councilmember here, seconded by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin to approve the consent, but removing 7.01, 02, and 04 for a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right. The second by you, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. All right. Discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Ingram.
What would be the new dates? First or second regular meeting of October?
Um, we'd probably set it for the probably first.
I would like that, yes.
The next available meeting?
Yes, yes, sir. I think that's 10:10.
Yeah, so we can get it moving.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to approve with those exceptions? All right, Council, those in favor, show of hands. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 8.0, the legislative hearings, 8.01, Mr. Harmon.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Council, we're preparing to hold the city council, the legislative hearings with city council formally seeks your input. Individuals desired to speak in the hearing must sign up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We will begin with Mr. Harmon's presentation and move into the formal hearing. 15 minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed to items related to the hearing. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement, single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may utilize the entire 15 minutes. At the conclusion of the presentation or when notified, when the city clerk calls your name, you'll come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address. You may then begin to address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And the timer will ring at the end of your allotted time. So, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The first item we have is a hearing tonight is your agenda item 8.01 or case P2226. This is property located 2881 Gillespie Street. It is a request for an initial zoning, so it does have an annexation with it. This is going from to mixed residential five conditional zoning for dwelling multi-unit, single-family detached on one lot, which is a new category that council added to our unified development ordinance a few months ago. We're looking at just over 50 acres. This is in District 2. And the zoning commission did recommend approval. Looking at where the property is located, the best way to describe it is directly across the street over here is the Walmart on Gillespie. Just off the screen to the right is one of the runways for the airport. So that kind of gives you an idea of where we're looking at. It is in the county's jurisdiction currently. Our land use plan right now calls for this to be an open space area. The reason for that, however, is that this front half here is an active cemetery. And this is part of that property. So it was looked at as an extension of the cemetery, but that's no longer the case. Couple of photos of the property as it sits. It's just kind of a mainly flat, open area. And then around the property, to the west, again, this is the Walmart area. To the north is a single-family residential neighborhood. Also to the west is a warehouse area. And then to the south, going toward the airport, there's some more industrial type uses associated with the surrounding of the airport. Originally, this is a site plan that, that has been submitted and conditioned to 300 units. However, today, the applicant's legal counsel got with me and they have now, I believe, going to go forward. They can explain this to you with a revised site plan and a request for no more than 237 units. So a reduction of 63 units over what had previously been part of their conditioning. This is property in the airport overlay district. This property is located approximately right here in the overlay district. Overlay district's a pretty big area. The more important zones are the airport impact zones that you'll see here. This is located in Zone 6, right over here, kind of on the edge of it, is our understanding, this is one of the, it's a left turn area for the airport. So when planes take off, going in kind of this northerly direction, that sometimes they have to make a left turn and it would bring them back basically over this site. You have in your packet, a email with concerns from our airport director over the density of residential uses this close to the airport and in proximity, proximity to that left turn coming back off of the airport as well. The zoning commission has recommended approval of the MR5 conditional zoning. The proposed zoning map amendment implements some policies in the future land use plan. And a amendment to the future land use plan would be appropriate, they felt, for this proposed change in use. And the conditions offered by the owner would limit the development potential of the property to a little less than what is currently allowed under the county zoning. The use is permitted by the proposed change in district and classification. Applying to this use will be appropriate in the immediate area of land to be reclassified due to the existing zoning and uses surrounding the property. Under the current county zoning, 159 single-family units and approximately 148 multifamily units for 343 could be built on this particular property. And the commission saw no other factors that would substantially affect public health safety, morals of general welfare. If you would hold any questions you have of staff until after you're, you've gone through the public hearing, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. So with that, we will open the hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, ma'am. We have seven speakers for this item. The first speaker is Mr. Jonathan Charleston.
Mr. Mayor, I think there were several folks that signed up in support of this. They've yielded their time to me. And so myself and my colleague, Charles Smith, are going to do a little bit of a tag team towards the end, if that's okay. All right. And then what I'll do is reserve two minutes at the end for any rebuttal, if that's okay.
So, Madam Clerk, since he's occupying the time, so instead of three each, it'll be 13, 15 minutes?
15 minutes, and that will be it. So we can't reserve two minutes at the end.
Well, I guess he'll, I guess he'll stop talking. It's a part of his 15 minutes, 15 minutes total.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
This is a quick video of the project. Is that possible to just pop that in real quick?
the long-term commitment of buying a house, but not anymore. With Next Chapter Neighborhoods, you don't have to buy the American dream. You can rent it. Single-family houses with picket fences on lamppost-lined streets. Elegant homes thoughtfully designed with upscale appliances and great spaces for a family to live. In a real neighborhood- In a real neighborhood with sidewalks, first-class resort-style amenities, and places to gather with neighbors and friends, and a friendly team of professionals on-site to serve you. At Next Chapter Neighborhoods, we're building great neighborhoods for great neighbors. All the benefits of owning your own home with the convenience of renting.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. The first thing I'd like to bring to your attention is what Mr. Harmon suggested is that this project is now, the site plan is for two hundred and thirty-seven units, and that's gonna be very important as we move along. Again, my name is Jonathan Charleston, and my address is two oh-one Hay Street, Suite two thousand, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I have with me tonight, uh, the developers, uh, Next Chapter, um, Neighborhoods, as well as the owners of the land. Mr. Berice here, Corey, both Mr. Berices are here. They've owned that property along with Mr. Drawhorn for how many years? Since nineteen eighty-three, and thank you for being here, and, and the Next Chapter folks, raise your hands so everybody sees you. Great. It's a privilege to come before, uh, council this evening on behalf of Next Chapter Neighborhoods, along with the, uh, the individuals that have made this petition to purchase this property. The one thing that I will say to you, ladies and gentlemen, is this morning, when I got up, first thing I read is my Wall Street Journal every morning. And the first thing it says here on the front page of today's paper is the United States is running short of land for housing. I don't have to tell you that because the city of Fayetteville knows you're twenty thousand units short of housing in Fayetteville. Twenty thousand units short. And the Wall Street Journal said, "It's not just a Fayetteville problem, it's a national problem." I'm gonna leave this here for it to be circulated around. But many of you remember this project that we're talking about tonight. I call it detached multifamily, detached multifamily. And this is the latest trend in housing in the United States. The big issue in the United States today is that what we call build-to-rent housing has become very, very important because so many different categories of folks don't want to own houses. They don't want to own. You have seniors that have now empty nesters that don't want to own. You have millennials that don't want to own. Uh, you have people that don't want to get stuck in a house for thirty years. That is something that is very important, and that's what's happening in this, uh, current environment. As mentioned early on, the property is located on Gillespie Street at the end of Bridgewood Drive. It's fifty-point-one-two acres. And the owners here today want to do what everybody wants to do, Councilman Thompson. They want to develop their property to its highest and best use, and they don't want to carry the burden of someone else that says, "I don't want you to develop your property because I have something else in mind for it." You know, one of the most fundamental things about the United States is the ability for landowners to develop their property to its highest and best use. And so Next Chapter Neighborhoods requests tonight the initial, initial conditional zoning. And as Mr. Harmon mentioned today, this property can be developed under the county right now, and, and it will be developed to a tune of, I think, about three hundred and forty-three units. But what is proposed, uh, tonight is for this property to be conditioned as MR five at two hundred and thirty-seven units. Now, why is that important? Well, what you're gonna hear, and what you've probably already heard from the airport, and I love this airport, I fly out here as often as I can. But what you'll, what you'll hear from the airport is that this particular property, piece of land, is a risk or a threat to the safety of the airport. What I will say to you, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, that simply is not the case. It simply is not the case. And if you look at the report of the staff, which includes the report from Mr. Tony Coleman, Impact Zone Six says the following, now listen very carefully. It says that Impact Zone Six is appropriate for low-density residential dwellings. That's what it says in everything that was submitted by the airport. That's what's in the twenty-forty land use plan. That's what's in the county's plan. That's what's in the airport's plans. It says this area, Impact Zone Six, is appropriate for low-density, which is one to four units per acre. One to four units per acre. It says typically, typically, and Charles Smith is gonna deal with that issue. But it also says, folks, that it's appropriate for up to one hundred people per acre if it's non-residential. What kind of sense does that make? So you can put a hundred folks there, working for a company, three shifts a day, or you can put four units per acre, four units per acre, to address the twenty thousand unit shortage that we have in our country. I mean, in this county, in this city. So what I will say to you, Mr. Benavente, okay? If you looked at that statue, and I know you have, it says one hundred, not fewer than one hundred people per acre under Impact Zone Six, if it's non-residential. You saw that, right? Or four units of residential per acre. So if it's four units, what is that, maybe twenty people? On an acre versus one hundred for commercial. So let me tell you what this story is all about, folks. What this story is about is the airport wants to develop in a commercial way, and it wants Mr. Berice and Mr. Drawhorn's property to be available when they get ready to do it. And they want you to use your zoning powers to do that. I just think that's inappropriate. If they wanted that land, they could've bought that land. So you have Next Chapter that has come in here, made an offer that's been accepted by both Mr. Berices to sell property they've had for nineteen, since nineteen eighty-three, that they've paid taxes on, they've done all this stuff. And now they wanted to have it developed to its highest and best use, and the airport said, "Wait a minute, wait a minute." Do I get my time back?
Can, can we please turn our phones on silent, just so we can keep an integrity of meaning?
So what I'd like to point out to you is that the planning staff in their report tonight correctly states at page eight of the staff report the following. "The twenty-twenty-three off-airport land use plan map and current county zoning show most of the property to be in R-ten and R-five-A residential districts." So under the county's present zoning, a mix of approximately a hundred and fifty-nine single-family and a hundred and eighty-four multifamily dwellings for a total of three hundred and forty-three could be built right now on that site. What's to hang up is the development needs water and sewer. And the city has a requirement that to be annexed, right? To get your water and sewer, you have to be annexed, and that's the requirement. Other than that, you wouldn't have water and sewer. Then if you didn't have water and sewer, then that would be a public safety issue in and of itself. So the owner of the property in question has conditioned the request to no more than two hundred and thirty-seven units. So in other words, if developed in the county, up to three hundred and forty-three units could be constructed on this site without any zoning changes at all. It is important to point out that the Hope Mills Town Board recently approved the residential development of approximately seven hundred units at the end of a run, of the runway. It's in the airport overlay district, it's just not in Impact Zone Six. And I might add, Impact Zone Six, if you saw the chart, this piece of property is right on the very edge of Impact Zone Six. So as I stated before, Next Chapter Neighborhoods proposes to develop two hundred and thirty-seven units on that fifty-point-one-two-acre tract, which means that we could do, if this, if the council exercises this discretion, Ms. Banks-McLaughlin, if you exercise your discretion, you could put four-point-seven units, um, on that site. Four-point-seven units for a total of two hundred and thirty-seven units. And so let me tell you why all this is important. It's because the whole question is about the density. And the airport overlay district and the Impact Zone says that residential units can be developed at a low-density standard. What you have here is that the UDO itself does not define low density. It doesn't define medium density, it doesn't define high density. But as you can see, uh, from your, uh, twenty-forty plan, it says that low density is mainly single-family residential, lots that are typically one to four dwellings per acre. That's what your twenty-forty plan says. The key is typically, that's the key. The language of the future land use plan is not restrictive, but it's permissive. So what I will say to you tonight is, under Airport Impact Zone Six, it states very clearly, and it's in your material at page eight of the staff report, that the Impact Zone Six should generally allow low-density residential development and non-residential development accommodating fewer than one hundred people per acre. So what you have, if it's commercial, folks, it's a hundred units, I mean, a hundred people per acre. If it's residential, the kind of stuff that I think the city council really cares about, then it's about four-point-seven units per acre or about twenty people. And the difference here, the, the, the one opportunity you have here, and then I'm gonna pause, is that this is the only time you have, really, as city council folks, that you can vote against the opposition and not have to worry about them voting against you. Because the opposition in this case is employees of the city, it's the airport, okay? And so you guys can make a decision tonight and not have to go home and worry about whether somebody's gonna vote against it. So again, what I will say to you tonight is the most valuable thing that we have is our ability to develop our property to its highest and best use. This is a low-density, uh, development. We're talking four-point-seven units per acre. And, uh, we'd ask that city council exercise this discretion because the land use plan, Mr. Benavente, is not restrictive. It doesn't say you shall do no more than four units. It says typically, it's one to four units. And it says generally, it's one to four units, it's low-density, if that's what we're doing. So I'm gonna pause here, and, uh, we'll come back with our rebuttal and, uh, answer any questions that you might have.
All right, that's it, Mr. Charleston?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Lynch, speaking in opposition.
Mark's my good friend.
About to find out.
Well, I made it to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Lynch.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, my name is Mark Lynch. Um, I'm the current chairman of the Airport Commission.
Can you state your address for us?
I'm sorry?
Your address, or an address you'd like to use?
Oh, my address is eight thirty-three Bragg Boulevard, right here in Fayetteville. Been there since nineteen, can I remember, uh, for a long time, so I'm here as representing the Airport Commission. And in this particular case, we've got a number of concerns. Obviously, Mr. Charleston has done an excellent job of laying out all of the specific, uh, ordinance requirements, uh, for density. And there's no question that we're, have a housing shortage in certain income ranges that need to be addressed. The problem that you have with this particular project, it's a great project. It'd be great if it were somewhere else. Uh, the problem that you have is the issue of safety. Um, I'm also, in addition to being chairman of the Airport Commission, I'm a pilot. I have over seven thousand hours. I've been flying since nineteen seventy. And I've also been the chairman of the, um, Equalization Board of Review and the, uh, Board of Adjustment. And in those capacities, I fully embrace the concept of owners being able to make the best absolute use of their own property. But in this case, in the Zone Six, right at the edge of the turnout, the left turnout, if you're gonna have an engine failure in a twin-engine aircraft, which there's been one, uh, you're gonna crash right there. And I can promise you that an aircraft crash into a home is not a pretty sight. It's not pretty for the pilots who wind up dying in it almost every time, or the people who live in the home who may or may not encounter the ravages of fire that aircraft crashes typically create. So I'm not here to put down the concept of additional housing. God knows we need it. I just ask you, in your capacity as council members, to consider the safety of our residents and whether or not this is the best way to provide the, uh, additional housing that we need in this community, uh, for all of our citizens. And I'm not gonna belabor the point, so thank you so much for listening to me. Thanks, Mayor Mitch. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Appreciate it.
And I'll yield to who's next.
Madam Clerk?
Ma'am, we have no further speakers.
All right, uh, so with that, uh, we will close. You, you had something, Mr. Charleston, I, uh, think you had about a minute and fifteen seconds.
What I'm gonna do, Mr. Mayor, is hand out a couple of things for you guys to take a look at.
Put a minute, fifteen.
I can't do that, so I'm doing my cell phone.
All right.
Uh, the one thing I'm gonna do is hand out a couple of things for you all to look at. I will say that, uh, in all of the airports you guys have been in, I know, whether it's Raleigh, Charlotte, uh, Atlanta, what you see are rooftops as you come in. And what I will say is, if we're worried about safety, I would be more concerned about a hundred people in a box as opposed to a smaller number of people in a residential setting, and I think you need to keep that in mind.
How lo, how long do I have? Minute fifteen?
No, probably in the forty-seven second.
Okay, let me, let me be extremely quick then. I, I appreciate and respect, uh, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Charles Smith, twenty-six-thirty, Mirror Lake Drive. Uh, I appreciate and respect, uh, the argument set forth by Mr. Lynch. But I look, I think I turn back to, uh, the correspondence between Mr. Harmon and Mr. Tony Coleman indicating that Airport, Airport Impact Zone Six should generally allow low-density residential development, which is what we're trying to do here. Given that, I think the viability of this project depends on your definition of low density, which Fayetteville's future land use plan defines as one to four dwellings, uh, per acre, which what's proposed is now two hundred and thirty-seven, I believe, detached multifamily residential units over fifty acres, which comes to about four-point-seven dwellings per acre. The word typically is used before one-point-four. I believe that word is used intentionally. Uh, and I believe that that word is meant to give discretion, uh, to the council in deciding the number of dwellings per acre for low-density residential areas. Uh, in making this request, uh, we're not asking that the council determine a development resulting in eight dwellings per acre should be considered low-density residential, uh, but we are asking the council to use this discretion as it was intended.
Attorney Smith, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, so counsel, uh, Madam Clerk, you said no more speakers?
No, no, sir, no further speakers.
With that, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, do have a question. I'll also have council members- I also have council members Benevente, Ingram, and Thompson, so I will go in that order, and I'll catch mine at a conclusion. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you. I'll begin by saying millennials do want to own homes if, you know, we could afford them in this current economy. I remember seeing this presentation several months ago, and I'm really grateful for this opportunity to ask the developer a question that I was disappointed by their answer the last time. It's with regard to any of these 237 units that I believe are only rentals, not for sale, and also do not, are not, cannot be defined as affordable housing. Is that correct?
Units are not affordable housing, that's correct. They're market, market-rate apartments.
And then, Mayor Coleman, I believe that it may be after everyone gets a chance to speak, but I wanted to hear from Airport Director Coleman as well.
Okay, we'll come back to that. You said after?
Whenever's appropriate.
All right, if this is your ask, then whatever questions you have, we can give it during your time.
Director Coleman? As it relates to the density question, what is your recommendation with regards to this particular development?
Again, Tony Coleman, Airport Director, the recommendation that I would make would be in alignment with what city council is basically giving to us. They have said that they wanted to have a place where the Airport Overlay District protects the public health, safety, and welfare in the vicinity of the Fayetteville Regional Airport by minimizing exposure to and giving the public notice of probable high noise levels and accident hazards generated by the airport operations, and to encourage future development that is compatible with the continued operation of the airport and the economic well-being of the city. The parcels in question line directly underneath the primary path that a significant number of student pilots, general aviation, and commercial pilots use when arriving and departing your airport. As was mentioned by Chair Mark Lynch, in cases where pilots have engine failures, we are all trained to find the nearest open area and land. Right now, the largest open area for an emergency landing is on the downwind leg or in the very area that this property is being suggested. While I would not want to recommend a specific number of houses, and I can tell you, it came from the original 250 down to 237, so that is a lesser density, but I think in order to keep up with your plan and to protect the community, I think anything less than two or three is, anything more than two or three is probably going to be something that you would not recommend.
Thank you, Director Coleman.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman, please, yep, don't go too far. I have some just very brief questions, and I also want to thank Mr. Mark Lynch for being here with us tonight, who I believe said that he was a pilot, and the, what was his position again, as presenting tonight?
He's the chair of the Airport Commission.
Thank you. Dr. Coleman, were you a pilot?
I am a pilot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, fixed wing and rotary wing.
How many years?
Since 1984, and that's given my age.
Thank you. And what has been your experience within the airport industry? How long have you been within fully the airport industry?
I've been with the airport industry for 29 years.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Coleman. I want to just bring up very briefly that sometime in 20, maybe even last year, we set forth an airport business development strategy that was presented by our Airport Director, Dr. Coleman, and our Economic Developer Consultant, Mr. Robo, who I think is with us this evening.
Yes.
And one of the recommendations, well, very strong recommendations, that we, as council agreed on, was expansion to ensure that we were building our airport, building around our airport in a term of more commercial benefit. And so, when we look at that, and we think of that, and we think about our strategy of investment, of infrastructure and site acquisition, and then also for you to say that when a plan has to come down in an emergency landing, I've been on three planes where I've had to come down on an emergency landing. Two was to heavy storm, and then one was an emergency due to a passenger. And so I know the importance of emergency landing, and to note that we only have two, that is, that is a very significant concern of mine. Thank you for speaking with us tonight, Mr. Mayor.
If I may?
Yes, yes.
That, one of the goals in that plan that was developed by FCEDC, that was part of the airport business strategy, was to, was the development of an airport corridor. And specifically, it said, "The City of Fayetteville and Cumberland County should leverage the Airport Overlay District to address zoning, land use, infrastructure, site development, and streetscape. This development corridor plan is critical to capturing business investment opportunities in the airport area." I yield.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, when the time is current, when the time is right, I prepare for a motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have so many questions, I don't even know where to start. I'm going to start with the city manager. Mr. Manager, did the city ever plan to purchase property around the airport for housing? And two, did that ever come to fruition?
For housing, the airport has, airport has actually bought several houses. Not sure, Dr. Coleman, if you know right off how many we have purchased over time.
We have three on Pine Haven, one on Airport Road, two on, three on Docking Road.
Okay. So we have, in the past, purchased several homes that, in the airport area. But other than that, using federal and airport money, we've not used any general fund money for that. We have plans and are currently looking for a consultant to help us with airport development around, and we have actually put that RFP out several times. But as it relates to buying homes, the homes that have been bought have been as the ones that Dr. Coleman...
My second question would be, has the purchasers of this property followed every ordinance and law in order to build houses on that property?
I'm not sure. Presently, the property is not in the city. It is, that, if council approves the rezoning as requested, then you have a subsequent item, so I can't speak to what they've done thus far as it relates to that specific question. But to my knowledge, yes.
My next question would be, then, how does, well, I mean, private property that needs approval from council on who they can sell it for, has the airport tried to purchase the property prior?
The airport has not, but the, there has been conversations with prior boards about trying to clean up the corridor, as well as to acquire property in the area for economic development.
Are there other houses in the impact area? I think that's Zone Six. I was on the fence at first until the word transitional housing came up with the Kelseys, because I did not know that transitional housing is a big boom across the United States. My last and final question is, is kind of rhetorical, but when they build these houses, or when they get the opportunity to build these houses, will residents know that they're in an impact area?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so I do have a couple of questions, I guess, probably for Airport Director. I know Mr. Lynch, I think, said he had been a pilot since 1983. Mr. Lynch? I don't want to date you, my friend. So, okay, and, Dr. Coleman, you've been with the airport how long?
I've been with the airport for 29 years.
And you've been a pilot for how long?
Since 1984.
So in this airport overlay plan that we have, and this may be a question for you or the manager, was there input from you or the Airport Commission when this plan was, when the city council adopted this plan, or working on the plan that was brought to city council for final adoption?
There was input from myself and former Airport Director Bradley Whited. We talked to the town of Spring Lake, we talked to Hope Mills, and we brought it to Cumberland County as well.
So you had been with the airport for 29 years?
That is correct.
You had input in this airport overlay plan that we have?
That is correct.
So help me understand the difference in what the plan says, what it says. Impact Zones One, Two, and Five are zones where recommended land use shall prohibit residential. Impact Zones Three and Four shall allow zero to low-density. Airport Zone Six shall generally allow low-density residential and non-residential development accommodating fewer than 100 people per acre. So with your input, your 29 years' experience, what is the difference between those impact zones, and why were, if this was a concern now, why was it not a concern there?
Okay, my response to that would be, when you have Impact Zones One, and I don't have that graph in front of me, those are primarily on the approach zones, where you're actually landing an aircraft or departing a runway. In those zones, you really don't want to be in the direct path coming in or out. There are some other zones that are on the periphery going out that are kind of an expansion of that primary departure or arrival zone. Impact Zone Number Six is actually to the left or right of the primary runway. It was mentioned that the suggested development is right on the edge of Impact Zone Six. Well, for a primary runway like runway 422, that's more than the 5,000. I think it goes out to one, to 11,000 feet to the left, which is about two miles, which is more than covers what he was talking about. The reason for the, for the changes or the differences really relates to not something that I put in there, but that the planning and zoning folks put in there. The draft of the document was not by me, but it really relates to where it's located and how likely, the probability of an accident or incident occurring in those zones.
So understanding that, and the project that's in question is in Zone Six?
That is correct.
Which is the one where this plan that you had a part of said that you could put 100 or fewer?
The 100 or fewer really related to non-residential. And as has been indicated, that was really designed for industrial development or for people that would not be there on a permanent basis. It's the difference between, I want to live in an area that's totally unsafe, or I want to work in an area that there's a probability of an incident.
So, so the part of that that says allow low-density residential and commercials or non-residential, so the, I'm speaking to the residential part of that sentence?
Yeah, the low, for the, Impact Zone Six says low residential development, which would be the R10 that it currently is right now.
So, if I'm understanding you, that's kind of where I was going. So currently, 343 units can be put there. But what the ask gives is for 237.
Well, I think they have the, they have the items that are listed for the, with the numbers, but it's still underneath the Airport Overlay District. So the, the decision then lies with the council to make a decision as to whether you want to, to put underneath that particular impact zone...
Right, right, no, I'm following you there. So I'm using the document that you have that we're supposed to make the decision on. I have some questions because the document that we just referenced says you could do both?
Yes.
In this particular zone. Currently, what you said was some of the basis for this document, you could put 343. The ask is to put 237, which is less, so it's less density, right? So that is a part of what I'm asking. The other part that I wanted to talk about is the economic development plan done by FCEDC. So, Mr. Van Gheens, I know you're not, wasn't a part of the original part of this, but you're very familiar with that part of it. The sites identified in the airport redevelopment plan, those four circled sites, is this one of those sites?
Those were not the, on, those were on the airport, an airport directly adjacent, those four in there.
So the plan for future development, those four circled sites that are in your plan that's in this packet, this is not one of those sites?
I don't want, there are plans to develop that corridor. This is not one of the four sites that we previously identified inside the fence.
Okay.
The others were all inside the fence or directly adjacent.
Right, so the future plans are not impacted because they were not necessarily identified in the plan that's in this packet?
We've looked at and recommended looking at industrial and airport-related businesses from 301 all the way through past the airport, out to 95, along that road. So from a recommendation standpoint, that corridor was looked at to be industrial and aviation-related.
And the final part I'd say is, the fifth part of that plan that I'm referencing talks about infrastructure, which is needed for any of those things to come to fruition, correct?
Yes.
Which is the water and sewer. This particular project also brings water and sewer, even though it's not to an identified site, but it brings infrastructure to an area that doesn't currently have it, right?
Infrastructure could be served, there are no sites, new sites that would be served by this, if this project were to happen, it would not expand infrastructure, any economic development sites that currently don't have access to it.
So any of the ladders and the connections that, that come into a site that doesn't have anything, couldn't benefit some of the stuff that's around?
Not, not for the site itself, based on where this one's located.
Right, no, I'm not, not, not talking about the site in particular, but a part of your overall strategy is to bring more water and sewer to, to that area, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harmon, I've got some questions for you. Trying to understand, they can, they can build the county standards right now and not get water and sewer, they'll just be on Septic, right?
If there, as my, as the way I understand it, if they get turned down by council, then they can move in that direction.
And how many units could they build, the county standards?
Again, as has been mentioned, it looks like around 340 units.
So if we bring them in the city, we get city taxes, they get water and sewer, they pay PWC, and they build 96 less units, right? Is that a good, is that logic?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Harmon, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Thompson?
I just have one question, Mr. Mayor. I want to know, when was the last accident?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember, before I go to your second round, let me catch Councilmember Mahon, I didn't see his hand.
So for modification, the city has a Airport Overlay District, correct? And the county has a Airport Overlay District, correct? Hello?
You do it now.
Point is, so we're saying that the land, as it sits in the county, there could be up to 343 units, 159 single-family, 184 multifamily. That's assuming the county would approve that plan. Right, but, but it's still in the Overlay District? Without any representative from the county here to confirm that, I have questions about that.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. When was the last accident at the airport? And was it anywhere near Zone Six?
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have sat here and we've talked about safety, and we've talked about economic development. And I think that the one thing that I'm struggling with is, the director said it very eloquently, being in a home and being at work are two different things. Being at a home with maybe six people in the home and being at work, where you kind of know what's there, where there's not children, that kind of does that. I do feel like I do need to say this, and I feel like we need to address this, and I feel like we're always kicking the can down the road. 10 years ago, I sat out here, and I was not sitting in this seat, and there was houses to be built in my neighborhood. And what was said was, if we do not approve it, the county can put X number of... And what was said was, if we do not approve it, the county can put X number of houses in there. Well, it got approved, and as everybody knows on this, on this diocese right here, it turned my neighborhood into a runway, and the effect of what happened to that decision changed everything. So, we have over five hundred houses one way in, one way out because of the decision we made. So, I just feel like I have to make that public to say, you know, we need to address that situation, because that has been said over and over again in how we approve things. The other thing is, the economic development part of this, we have put fifty-five million dollars, not we, but the federal government has granted us fifty-five million dollars for the airport. I don't know who's been out to the airport lately, but we have a great updated airport, and it's still not finished. We, alls we've said was, we want cargo, we want business out there, we want industry out there. So, this is a tough one to swallow, and the decisions we make tonight are going to affect the next fifty years. That's all I had to say, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Ingram, you had something? Oh, Councilmember Mahndros, she had another round before, she goes to-
Question for staff regarding the MR five zoning. Is MR five considered low-density residential?
It is not, but again, this is being conditioned way down from what the typical MR five. The reason that they're looking at MR five is it's one of the few districts that allows this type of housing development.
For modification, what would be a low-residential district or zoning?
Typically, for us, it's SF-ten or anything lower than that.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Ingram, you had something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, I move to deny the rezoning request.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Ingram to deny seconded by Councilmember Benevente. Any discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor, discussion, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, before we go to the vote, I, I'm, I'm not sure the council understands, if, if we turn this down, they're going to build, they can build up to three hundred and forty-three houses, which we don't want, and it's going to be on septic tanks, which we don't want. And thirdly, because the mayor likes to call me the money man, because I focus on the taxes and the money and the value and the quality of life, we get no revenue from this. This is all county. And all I heard at our dinner meeting was how disappointed we are with the county. So, we're going to let them take all the money and run. So, I think the council needs to consider very seriously their vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benevente?
Mayor Protem just described the trolley problem pretty well there. The county doesn't need to do this either. To say that we would do it would somehow make it better is, is, is the wrong dichotomy to create. I also think it's important that folks recognize that affordable housing is not a part of this program. That's what we really need in this community. The assumption that market-priced housing is going to do anything to impact that two hundred thousand number in this community is a fallacy. I think that it's important that we have developers who want to invest in this community, like the Battles, who we heard from earlier, rather than taking this money and running home to Atlanta with it.
All right, uh, council, any other comments or questions? The motion on the floor is to deny. We'll say real quickly before we take our votes, we're twenty thousand short of housing, period, not affordable necessarily, that's a portion of it, but we're twenty thousand short. So, anyone who works a job every day, who may not meet the government's threshold of what that means, is still looking for a place to stay that they can afford to stay in. So, I think it's a matter of what's affordable to the individual. So, I don't think anyone is saying necessarily against that. The government has a very specific guideline as what affordable housing means, that word. So, housing that you can afford, we need more of it in, in Fayetteville in one way or another. So, with that being said, those who are in favor of denial, show of hands. All right, Madam Clerk, that is councilmembers Handros, Benevente, Banks-McLaughlin, Jensen, and Ingram. Okay, all right, all right. And, and those in favor, show of hands, just for the record, councilmembers Colvin Hare, Thompson, and Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor?
Motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we direct the city manager to inquire, inquire about purchase of this property.
Yeah.
It needs to go to work, okay, well, well-
Wouldn't be in favor of it.
I will, I will pull that, and then I'll bring it back to staff, thank you.
All right, all right, so, moving on, item eight point zero-one A, that is the text amendment to Article thirty of the UDO. Baptiste, how are you?
I am well, how are you?
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Baptiste, Planning and Zoning Division Manager. Tonight, we are bringing before you a two-part request. The first part is a text amendment, text amendment twenty-two dash zero-two for universities and colleges. This will be a creation of a new zoning district that will help support our colleges and universities develop. This text amendment will only affect the properties associated with Fayetteville Tech Community College, Fayetteville State University, Methodist Uni, and Methodist University. As identified as part of the Merkison Road-Bragg Boulevard Plan and the Future Land Use Plan, staff was directed by City Council in December of twenty-twenty-one to go ahead on and explore the possibility of the creation of the university and college zoning district. The text amendment went to the Planning Commission on March fifteenth of twenty-twenty-two and received the, a unanimous approval. The map amendment, which we'll hear in the next case, also went to the zoning commission in April, on April twelfth of twenty-two, twenty-two, and received unanimous approval. To go, um, to discuss the, the text amendments, Mr. Chester Green, who is a senior planner in the division, is going to take you through the text amendments. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I start going through the text amendments, I'd just like the council to know that the following regulations have been developed with input from the colleges and universities themselves. We met with them several times and gave them opportunities to go over our text and make input. The first chart is the, chart shows the dimensional standards for the new UC district. It shows the minimum lot area of ten acres, a maximum lot coverage of seventy, a maximum height of ninety, and then has a front and corner setback of twenty-five, a side yard setback of three feet or fifteen feet when abutting a residential zoning district, and a rear setback of twenty feet. This chart shows the permitted uses in the district. All uses associated with universities and colleges have been included. Some of the main uses include dormitories, childcare centers, restaurants, parking lots, parking structures. This chart serves the permitted accessory uses. They include uses like canopies, community gardens, food trucks, small-scale wind turbines, solar energy, all of the accessory uses that a college and university might try or need. This section and additional standards deals with childcare. The only text that we're amending in this section is that one sentence in bold, and it's basically exempting childcare in the UC district from additional parking and drop-off and deliver, and pickup areas, since these childcare things are normally in the heart of the university themselves. This section of additional standards deals with restaurants. In this section, we are exempting them, any restaurants that are within the interior of the campus, we're exempting them from how late they can be open, and also exempting them from the location of where they can place their outdoor seating, since in the middle of the campus, there's plenty of room to move around. This additional standard section deals with parking lots. These parking lots are standalone parking lots, not associated with the building. The only thing we're doing in this section is adding the UC to those regulations that limit them to a hundred-foot frontage unless they meet some additional standards in terms of landscaping and screening. This chart is the permitted signs in the, in this district. We added UC as its own line. It closely follows O-N-I regulations with the only exceptions being they're allowed to have three ro, three signs per road frontage, and we increased the maximum sign area to a hundred square feet. This section deals with special approval signs, it deals with banners and feather flags. These are items that are already, universities currently have, we're just trying to make it easier on them so they don't have to go through any special permitting process to get it, and includes reg, regulations dealing with the location size, and it also requires these signs to be kept and maintained in good condition. This last section deals with parking requirements. Currently, the parking requirements for universities and colleges is one per every two students plus one parking space for each employee on larger shift. We worked with the colleges and universities to develop a way to calculate the parking that breaks down the different main uses. So, it's seven parking spaces per classroom, one parking space per four beds in the campus dormitories, one parking space for three hundred square feet of office space, and one parking space for five thick seats in assembly hall area. This new calculation takes into account that not all students drive to school, many of them live there. That's the end of my-
One thing staff would like to reiterate to the council as well as to members in the audience, this text amendment and rezoning will only affect the properties identified as being owned by the individual universities. We're not looking to rezone anyone's property who is not currently owned by that particular college or university. This should not affect anybody else's enjoyment of their individual property, is just to assist the colleges and universities, to give them a little flexibility and be able to develop their particular properties, which are internal to their campus, to provide a better living experience for people who are, who are on the campus, as well as provide them some flexibility with expanding their educational opportunities for students coming onto their campus. That's staff's presentation. We ask that you hold any questions for staff until after you close your public hearing, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we will open the public hearing, Madam Clerk.
May we have no speakers for this item?
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing.
Excuse me, my paper says that, no, but-
You, you had a question?
My item says that we, this, it says that there's a speaker for this.
Right. Yeah, i, i, the numbers will change at the beginning, so, so that's-
Okay.
-pertained to a separate item. All right, Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just wanted to reiterate and thanks, thank Ms. Baptiste for your comments. I've received a couple of calls from citizens really across the city concerning receiving, receiving the notification, and once I explained it to them, they, they still were very thankful. So, I also want to thank our City Council members, because us increasing our notifications really, really did help many citizens, because it gave them an opportunity to know what was going on within their neighborhood, which they probably would not have known because we, before we went to a thousand feet for notifications, we were five hundred feet. So, thanks, council, for supporting that endeavor with me. So, thank you, Ms. Baptiste, for explaining that, because there were some concerns. As we look at the, the feather sign item, and I know that we were, I know that was something that Mayor Colvin and I had brought to the table when we were in the transit building, and I thought we, it was already a part of our ordinances, but help me, bring some clarity to me and help me to understand, not only would this particular text amendment support our institutions, our educational institutions, but that also would go across the board to our businesses in the city of Fayetteville, correct?
Actually, this feather flag option is just for the universities and colleges zoning district. We have a separate text amendment that's coming to the board, to the commission next month. It just passed the planning board this month, so it's going to be coming before the council next month for final ratification, hopefully, next month.
Which is including the feathers signs?
Feather, that's specifically for feather flags that would be for that signage across in every zoning dis, well-
Okay.
-in, in every business district in the city.
Yeah, th, thank you, I, I thought we had already had done that, but thank you, and I, I'm glad that everyone had an opportunity to hear that is listening tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and just before I go to Councilmember Ingram, I'd like to thank Dr. Keen and his team in the audience that's been there tonight, thank you for your work, and- And, Dr. Keen, you have, there's a few more months before you head- So, it looks like someone's counting, but thank you for your work, we're working with staff, you, and the other universities and colleges in this matter. So, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt all proposed text amendments.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to adopt recommended proposed UDO text amendment update seconded by Councilmember Hare. Discussion on that motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, those in favor? All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous, motion carries. Item nine point zero-one, evidentiary hearing, SUPs. We're now moving to the hearing that requires City Council to hear sworn-
Mr. Mayor?
We still have one left?
Eight zero two.
A little bit too fast, I'm sorry. All right. Got excited for a minute, Ms. Baptiste.
No problem, if you want to just go ahead on and vote on it.
Mayor Colvin?
Sir?
Because it relates so closely to the moves made, I move that we adopt eight point oh-two as well.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, it is set as a public hearing, so we do need to-
It is a public hearing, so I need to, I need to go through some formatters, but I'm coming to you, Councilmember Benevente. All right, Ms. Baptiste?
Yes. Good evening again, this is case number twenty-two dash fifteen. This is the rezoning of the properties associated with the text amendment that you, that council just approved. These properties are related to Fayetteville- These properties are related to Fayetteville Technical Community College, Fayetteville State University, and Methodist University. As you can see from the current zoning map, the properties associated with Fayetteville Technical Community College has, have a variety of zoning districts. They range from single-family, six residential, single-family, 15 residential, community commercial. So we would like to rehave those properties rezoned to universities and colleges so that they would have a unified zoning district. Fayetteville Technical Community College currently has a campus on Rayford Road that is zoned as agricultural residential. We als...
Sir? Please don't come up to the clerk unless you need, is that something reference to this, Madam Clerk?
Is there a reference to the previous one, sir?
Okay, the pre- the previous item is, is gone, just remit your item and then you have to step away from the clerk there, okay?
So, sir, the, I, I had called several times to get on the deck.
Hold, hold on a second, sir. We'll have someone address you. We're on a, a different item, but step, step back from the clerk for me, okay? All right, sorry about that, Ms. Baptiste.
Fayetteville Technical College also has a campus located on Legion Road that is currently zoned community commercial. This would also go to universities and colleges. As you can see with Fayetteville State University, they have zoning districts that range from single-family residential six and mixed residential five zoning districts. Methodist University has single-family residential 10 and planned neighborhood development as well as office and institutional. All of these campuses would be unified under the one zoning district of university and colleges and be subject to the text amendment or the text changes that were adopted previously. These campuses range in size for... For Fayetteville Technical Community College, we are talking about 24 properties that equal to about 129 acres. For Fayetteville State University is four, four, four lots that equal approximately 155 acres. For Methodist University, it is four lots that range, that have a, have a lot size of 652 acres. The zoning commission and professional staff are, do recommend approval of this rezoning of these properties to university, university and colleges. The proposed zoning text amendment implement the policies adopted by the future land use plan and the Merkison Road and Fort Bragg plan. The uses permitted by the proposed zone, change in zoning classification would help our colleges and university and aid in their development, and there are no other factors which would substantially affect the public health, safety morals, or general welfare. Thank you, that's staff's presentation. We ask that you hold any questions for staff until after you close your public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baptiste. With that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Yes, so we have one speaker for this item, Ms. Helen White, speaking in favor. Ms. Helen White. Appears to be not present, sir.
Is that Ms. White raising her hand? No, if you didn't sign up to speak, you, you wouldn't be able to do so, but you can maybe ask a staff member, is it pertaining to this? Yeah, so we'll get Ms. Baptiste to get it and we'll...
I think what she's saying, Mayor, is that Mrs. White is her aunt, and she has...
No. So it's a total separate person. Yeah, so we, we can't take questions off the floor, but Mr. Harmon, just give him your question and he'll, he'll get it to us, okay? Yes, ma'am. All right, Madam Clerk?
We have no further speakers, sir.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any, any questions for staff or any questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I had Councilmember Benavente, was it a motion you...
Okay, well, I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Benavente to approve recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on that motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Those in favor? All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries. Dr. King, again, thank you. Congratulations to you and your, your staff. Item 9.01, evidentiary hearing. We are now moving into hearings that require a City Council to hear sworn testimony. This is an evidentiary hearing. The City Council's decision must be based on competent material and substantial evidence presented in the hearing. All those wishing to speak must be sworn in and provided testimony under oath. Ask the City Clerk to affirm those who will participate in the meeting. After that, staff will present the case before I open the hearing.
Ms. Clerk, before we start, it's come to my understanding that the two owners of this particular property and the applicants did not call you to sign up. However, they are here this evening wanting, prepared to speak.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Harmon, i- if, if they didn't sign up, they can't speak?
Mr. Mayor, I do apologize, but this is a quasi, quasi judicial hearing, and they are parties, and so, yes, they would be allowed.
So if they're, if they, not necessarily speak in favor or against, but just to answer questions or give testimony, is that what you're saying?
Give testimony. Again, this is quasi judicial, so the rules are a little bit different than the previous item.
All right.
Point of order, I, I do have a clarifying question. Mr. Harmon, you said that they were owners?
The applicant.
They, they are the owner applicants.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, do you have anyone to swear in?
Yes, sir. I have 15 people signed up to speak in opposition, so...
Unless they're owners.
And then, in addition, the two speakers that Mr. Harmon referred to.
Okay.
So they will all need to take the oath.
Yes, if you all could please stand those who are signed up to speak so that you can be sworn in. And as well as the, the owner applicant, who is also, will be a party to any testimony. All right, Madam Clerk, if you could give them their oath?
Yes, if you could all please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth? So help you God. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, the next item you have is your agenda item 9.01, SUP 2206. This is property owned by Military Standard Construction, and they are the applicants. They are requesting a special use permit to allow three, two family dwellings or duplex units on two properties, three units altogether. Properties are located at 2417 and 2421 Colgate Drive. These are in District Five as well. Just to give you an idea of where the properties are located, they are here on Colgate, kind of in this curve of the road. Just a little ways off of this map to your east is the hospital, and then a little ways to the north is Village Drive, so it kind of gives you an idea of where this property is located. It's a fairly big residential development getting back there. Currently, the property is zoned single-family 10. And under that single-family 10, as a special use permit, the duplexes or two to four family dwellings are allowed. Our land use plan calls for low-density residential on these two particular properties. And right where the property is kind of split here, there's a power easement that goes through the, kind of this middle of the property running sideways as well. Couple of pictures of the property, it's undeveloped, this is the power easement going through the property. These are some of the houses surrounding the property, all very typical of the, the neighborhood itself. This is a rendering of what the applicant hopes to be able to build. These would be three units like this on the, on the two properties. And this is a site plan where they're looking to build. Currently, again, the property line, if you can see my mouse, splits somewhere through here, and so they're looking two duplexes on the eastern piece of property and one duplex on the western piece of property. And then, of course, being a special use permit, you will have different options and your findings when you come to that point. If you would hold any questions of staff until after your evidentiary hearing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. With that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, Mayor, if we could have the applicant and the owner come up and state their name and address, please.
Are these, these, okay, it's the applicant, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, would you mark?
You could please...
446 Willow Bin Lane, Fayetteville.
Okay.
Name, sir?
I'm Mark Mayoris.
If you would address the City Council, please.
I just wanted to give a little history of where I'm coming from on this project. I was a lieutenant in May of 2000, and I came here looking for housing, and I looked in Briar Hills, I looked in Murray Hill, I looked in Van Story Hills. I couldn't afford those houses. My wife, also in the Army, was stationed somewhere else. I had two kids playing elite soccer, and the travel, soccer expenses were very high, and I wanted to be in Terry Sanford School District, and I couldn't afford it. I bought a house in a fringe neighborhood, and I put my kids in those schools because that was my priority, and I made all the sacrifices required for that, okay? I eventually found a way to get into the Van Story. When my wife rejoined me, and I served for 30 years, my wife and I chose to retire here in Fayetteville, and we've called this our home. So I'm sorry to disappoint the, the pitchfork bearers in, on my back that I'm not a developer trying to ruin Fayetteville. I want to bring houses to our military people that they can afford. Everybody in this room, everything they have is for one reason, because the United States Military has blessed us with Fort Bragg. That's why Fayetteville is Fayetteville, and these kind of houses are the kind of houses that the military needs, and then they can be in the best schools. That is my intention on this project. They are great, 1,100 square foot per side. They are granite countertops, LVT flooring, hi, uh, high-end stainless steel appliances. You saw that they're attractive. I was living in Van Story in 2003 when the Glenn Burney cut-through was proposed, and I was, at that time, a pitchfork bearer. I went knocking on doors to get signatures. I thought it was going to ruin my neighborhood. I came to City Council and talked to City Council on, against it because I thought those two four condo buildings and the Glenn Burney cut-through were going to ruin my neighborhood. I'm telling you, I was wrong 20 years ago, and the people that are going to talk after me are wrong now. These, these are good, these are good, these are good propositions, and those, the Glenn Burney cut-through, to those of you that live in the Van Story Hills, know that that's made our neighborhood a better. Those two buildings, the four condos, have been an addition to the Van Story neighborhood, not a detraction. And these three duplexes are going to be a benefit. These are going to be a benefit to Briar Hills, just like the Glenn Burney cut-through was a benefit to Van Story.
All right. Thank you, sir. I wouldn't get too far, maybe questions, so...
Yeah, I'll be in...
All right. Yeah, and so, ladies and gentlemen, as we prepare now for those proponents and those opponents, we ask that you please maintain composure and, and allow the, the speakers to speak uninterrupted. So we will go with, although we don't have time limits on the evidentiary hearings, we do have limitations on repeated, repeated statements or, or continuing to repeat facts that have been stated. So if I, if I interrupt y'all, it'll just be to remind you about that portion of it. So with that, Madam Clerk, we'll call first speaker.
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. James Dupree.
Good evening, sir.
My name's James Dupree. My address is 2415 Colgate Drive. You may recognize 2415 is just two numbers away from 2417, which is one of the properties we're talking about, so I'm just north of there. I'm looking at 30-plus years that I've lived in my current home. I, you know, have enjoyed living in a single-family development, and I do not, you know, wish to have basically a small apartment complex being put up next to me. So the, I have, duplexes are allowed in, in terms of what the gentleman says. I guess we're stuck with that, but at the same time, you know, you've got two houses being built very close together on the house, on the lot next to me, and that doesn't seem appropriate. The one thing I found out is they, they say that these houses are their ANZIO plan. I don't know how many of you know your Second World War history, but ANZIO was an invasion. It was very poorly planned. They kind of landed on the beach and told, were told to dug in, and from the individual's soldier's point of view, you know, he didn't know what was going through the mind of those people up front. The general who led it, General Lucas, he didn't subsequently, you know, get assigned any further duties.
Yes, sir, we had, we need to keep the testimony.
Okay, okay. But I'm pointing out that planning, a lot of times, those, those grunts like me who are just living in a subdivision, we sometimes wonder what the powers that be are doing with our lives. I also have provided you all with a survey that was done on this property in 1988, around the time I moved in, and it shows that part of the property is under 100-year flood warning. And as those of you know, we, with the hurricanes that we've had lately, these 100-year floods tend to happen a little more often. When one of those houses, if it's not sitting partly in the flood zone, it's very close to it, and so I, you know, those Marines at ANZIO were concerned about trench foot, and there was a, a lot of it happening, and I'm just worrying that that might happen here.
All right.
End it there.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dupree.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Mary Kennedy. Ms. Mary Kennedy?
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening. I'm Mary Kennedy, 2356 Rolling Hills Road, 28304. I will be brief. I guess I represent a passionate resident of Briarwood Hills. We moved here in 1980, drawn to Briarwood because of their lovely, single-family homes. We raised our family, paid our taxes, followed the code restrictions, and hopefully are good neighbors. So now here we are, to respectfully speak in opposition to SUP 22-06, which in my simple way of thinking is another term for rezoning these lots to some sort of multifamily. Should this succeed, it opens the door to easier future zoning change attempts. As we stand here tonight to defend Briarwood, we include Clearway, since Briarwood wraps around it. Whatever affects Briarwood eventually affects Clearway. Whatever affects Briarwood eventually affects Clearway. One of the many major concerns we have is the safe ingress and egress onto the property and safe road conditions around the site. Colgate is a long, winding road lacking stop signs. Therefore, people often speed, causing occasional accidents on the dangerous practically blind curve where these lots are located. It's mostly involving unfortunate homeowners pulling out of their driveways. This may only increase with the success of the S U P due to the additional car traffic and street parking. Finally, we fear the very real threat to our property values. We submitted a petition by the 10:00 AM deadline today with 389 signatures that we scrambled to obtain over the weekend. These are my people that we scrambled over the weekend to obtain after hearing that our online petition wouldn't be accepted. Well, this petition wasn't accepted either because we had to prove that the people who signed it had standing. Well, in the two hours we had to absorb this, we obviously couldn't do it. We also can't make those signatures go away. These are 389 of my dear neighbors that we caught for signatures between Harris Teeter and the beach and everywhere in between. For them and the many angry other neighbors we missed, we oppose S U P 22-06. Thank you so much.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Karen Ewart.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Karen Ewart. I live at 1657 Banbury Drive. I've been in Clearway about six years, and I do not support allowing duplexes in the neighborhood. It's a single-family neighborhood, and I wish it to remain that way. That's one reason I moved into it. I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Ms. Amanda Nguyen.
Good evening, Ms. Nguyen.
Council members and mayor, my name's Amanda Nguyen, 2425 Colgate Drive. I am right next to 2421 Colgate Drive, where they want to put two of the duplexes. We are a residential, single-family home. We have tons of elderly that live in these 300 to 400 homes in this neighborhood between Briarwood Hills, which it's called Briar Wood, not Briar. And they don't have any problems at any time day or night going out walking, after dark. We have a very safe neighborhood. We have property values that range anywhere from 275 on up. Property values, I believe, will go down once they put duplexes in there. The gentleman mentioned that he couldn't find housing in Briarwood in 2020, I believe he said. But at the same time, he went out and bought housing at 1.2 million. So, let's put these duplexes in his neighborhood. He has the gated driveway. The same $50,000 he spent to buy these two lots is going to depreciate all the housing in that neighborhood, probably the same amount. Whereas, if, if it was going toward the front, the very front of our subdivision, would be one thing. This is in the back of the subdivision. This is where everybody lives, is where everybody travels, is where everybody walks. In Clearway, on one portion of Clearway in the very front, there are townhomes, there are apartments, there are duplexes. There's also office buildings. Then you enter into the neighborhoods, and that is where our neighborhoods are. It's been single-family for all these years. We'd like to keep it single-family. There, there is affordable housing out here for the military. I'm an agent, I'm a real estate agent, and I do PCSs every day, from everywhere, from Germany, from Alaska to local. We do find them houses. There are houses out there for the military. So, please keep our neighborhood as single-family and vote against this S U P.
Mr. Ronald Vance.
Good evening, sir.
Didn't know it was so formal. I appear to be in my retired military casual attire right now. Sorry about that. But I'll be honest, I was a little aggravated, sir, when I got here, and I saw there were so many items on the agenda. I had kind of a migraine, and I just wanted to be over with. But I'm actually glad I got to see the other ones because there is two sides to every story. I do see that. I understand the retired, if he was a lieutenant, if he was lieutenant way back then, you retired at what, sir, lieutenant colonel or a colonel? Gotcha. I also spent 28 years in the military. I retired as a master sergeant, and I do remember those times that I couldn't afford to live where I wanted to live, and that was just the way stuff was. And now I'm retired, I'm a retired E8, retired first sergeant, and I bought into that neighborhood that I'm in now because I can't afford it, and I bought for the specific reason that some of the other individuals brought up, as it was single-family dwellings. It's the type of neighborhood I always wanted to live in. I'm not old by any means, I'm only 51. But this is the type of neighborhood that I wanted to live in and raise the, raise my youngest children. My major concerns are, I'm not really concerned about, I'll be honest, when, when you, when you hear a multi-unit dwelling, sometimes you worry about crime, you worry about dronomics. It appears that these are more expen, maybe not more expensive ones, but they might not fall in that area. So, I'm not worried that so much about that. But still, you've got to go back to property value. You've got to go back to the fact that that is in an extreme, I mean, I live 24, I'm sorry, 2416 Colgate Drive, so I'm another ground zero. Whatever they do to this property, I'll be looking out my window, watching them do it for the next three years, or however long it takes them to do it. So, I do worry about that curve. It is a blind curve. There are a lot of old people, I see them, older people, walking, right? Older people. There are a lot of, a lot of older people and younger people that love to walk in that area. I would worry about that. I would worry about the impact that the construction would have. I'm not going to lie, it will be inconvenient for me to, to be around the, you know, the ones of us that live beside it. It will be extremely inconvenient for us while the construction was going on. And, I mean, just to sum it up, everybody deserves an affordable, safe, nice place to live. I got it. This company has every right to build affordable homes, but if it lowers my property value and impacts the safety of the quality of life of my family and neighbors, it's just not a good fit. Just like when the council voted on the other issue with the airport and the houses in that area, that, those, the people that own that property had every right to sell it. The people that wanted to come in and build houses had every right to do so, but sometimes it's just not the right fit. So, I have no doubt the gentleman behind me has every right to build affordable duplexes somewhere, and people have the right to buy those. I just don't think it's the right fit in my neighborhood. And with that, I'm completely done. The next speaker, ma'am, was my wife, and she wasn't able to come, so you can go ahead and zero her out.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Vance.
Our next speaker is Mr. Matthew McLean. Mr. Matthew McLean.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, pro temp, council members and city staff. Thank y'all for having this hearing. There are three major areas I wanted to talk about beyond what I've heard from my neighbors, and 2307 Vandemere Avenue is my address. First is an environmental concern. We have a hurricane coming this weekend. I hope everybody's prepared, buying batteries, flashlights, all the things P W C tells us to do and the police tell us to do. We've had major hurricanes in 2016, 2018, and 2020, and this neighborhood has had extensive flooding during that time, especially as you go downstream. The water right behind this house, you can see on the westernmost property of the, of the duplexes, that's the leftmost one on the site plan. It's literally touching the flood plain. It's right on the line, and we know houses in this area that are not in the flood plain have had flooding up three, four feet into the house above the crawl spaces. So, there's an environmental concern that all that, all those driveways and all those rooftops are going to cause much more runoff. And I know we have, I don't know, millions and millions of dollars of bond that we need to vote for and coming up to support our runoff issue. So, this is just going to cause greater issues there. All this water ends up down under Robinson Street at the MLK Bridge that flooded, I mean, it was up to the top of the bridge during, during the hurricane. So, I, I have some serious environmental concerns, flooding and stormwater runoff. There's a massive power line. I don't know if that's a 50-foot or 100-foot easement that we're going to allow people to, to live right under. That doesn't seem like it's the best use or the safest use for, for folks in an 1,100-square-foot duplex in a neighborhood full of 2,000-square-foot houses. So, we're not, I don't think it's great environmental stewardship to put people right in, in that position, but that's not my decision to make. This area is currently, currently zoned R10. I think in our neighborhood, in these two neighborhoods, in Clearway and Briarwood, we've had, off the top of my head, in the last three years, at least four or five brand-new R10 homes built. I had one building a lot adjacent to my house. Lovely neighbor, the Hickmans, moved in, bought it. So, we're not against building houses. He could build R10 houses. Excuse me, it's 9 o'clock. That's my, the police tell us to check everything at 9:00, so I have an alarm set. That's, the, the marketing is working, all right? And, and city staff, I apologize, 15 of us came to talk tonight. I know y'all probably wanted to go home, but, but, but y'all, those are, you know, the D U D O is there for a reason, the R10 is there for a reason. I, I think there's no compelling reason to give a special use permit. It doesn't fit in with the integrity of the neighborhood. It's been this way for 50 years, and a lot of things 50 years ago weren't right, but I think the layout of the neighborhood was. I also want to commend the previous hearing. I noticed that the folks who came before us on the last contentious one, it was an offer to buy, and the people looking to buy asked for the rezoning and, and everything prior to making the purchase. We've done it backwards in this case. He's bought the property, and now he wants special treatment. And, and we're all for fair treatment, but there's no compelling reason to give special treatment in this case, and there's a whole lot of reasons to keep it the way it is. So, thank y'all, God bless you, I'll get my.
Ms. Ellen Brantley. Ms. Ellen Brantley.
Good evening, ma'am.
Council. My name is Ellen Brantley. I live at 2705 Colgate Drive. I've lived there initially from 1964 to 1969 with my parents. Then I came back about 12 years ago to care for my mother her last two years of life. I'm a widow of a retired 100% disabled Navy veteran. Two of my long-term positions before retirement were in residential and light commercial construction and in property management for a group of 280 luxury apartments at the North Carolina coast. The covenants in my section of Briarwood and the covenants in section four are identical. They call for single-family homes. The covenants were first written in 1962. After the initial 30 years, they would automatically renew every 10 years. You can tell I'm not a professional speaker. Get a little nervous. As an owner in Briarwood, I did not receive a letter about the notice. Fortunately, we have really good neighbors who let everybody know what's going on. I think possibly in one of the previous cases, you said that there was a 1,000-foot notification? Is that correct? So, since I'm outside that area, I did not get notified. The proposed construction on the lots is outside the scope of the covenants, which are on file at the courthouse. So, that alone should disallow this to go ahead as duplexes. As citizens, we're expected to follow rules and laws. In this situation, the same course should be followed. The covenants are there for a reason, and because everyone who's moved there has expected to live in a single-family neighborhood, we would like to see that remain. Consider if this were your neighborhood and this were happening to you. With regard to the points that were supposed to be met, the eight points, I sort of got a quick, and I think I've got this right. The SF10 property is pretty much live and let live philosophy in allowing individuals to live within the law and to not impede the movement or lifestyle, lawful lifestyle of their neighbors. And this, if this is a correct interpretation of item one, then I'm in agreement. We should all be able to live as we want to in our neighborhoods. The construction of the duplexes in number two would not be compatible with the current construction in Briarwood. And now that I've seen the actual rendering of the apartments, the duplexes, they do not fit with the construction that's already there. They would visually impact our neighborhood. This is item number four. Number three has already been discussed. Duplexes would visually impact our neighborhood as they are neither allowed nor in line with current construction. Number five was touched upon about the flooding situation. We have wetlands, we have a 500 now, 500-year flood zone. It is possible that the new construction could affect the water flow going downstream. And we also have an area of wildlife. It's, it's a protected land that's run by the state that is adjacent to some of this property. We discussed the road conditions, and so I won't talk about that. Additional, or adding duplexes to our neighborhood would immediately have a negative effect on our property values, especially for the people who live the closest to the duplexes. The special use permit, this is item eight, is not compliant with our covenants and goes against their purpose and the fact that they are part of our county's permanent records in the courthouse. I had a similar situation happen a little over 30 years ago in a previous neighborhood. The neighbors went to city council. Someone wanted to build a trailer park in a residential area. It was an old neighborhood. The houses weren't worth a lot, but the neighbors were really good. They'd been there a long time. And we did not win. We were told that the trailers would be relatively new, that we would have little white picket fences in front of each one, and that everything would go on just fine, our neighborhood would be okay. I ended up selling my house because everything was not okay. It did not end up being anything like it started out to be, and the neighborhood went very far down. There was a lot of crime after the first year or so. And so, based on my prior experience and the fact that I would love to stay in my neighborhood because it's wonderful, and the fact that our covenants are for single-family only, and the fact that I have great neighbors, I would urge you all to consider all the points presented by everyone. Vote against the building of the duplexes in Briarwood Hills. That would, as someone else said, open the door for future, who knows what, multifamily and other things. In general, if there were houses going there, that would be a different story. If the builder would put houses that would coincide with the single-family in the covenants, I have no problem with that. My neighbor gave me a couple of other messages. In the covenants, it does say that there, each single-family dwelling has to be a minimum of 1,700 square feet. Those covenants are still active today. Let me see if there's anything else. I agree that no special use should be given without prior permission. That's the end. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bill Vernakes. Sorry if I've mispronounced that, sir.
My name is Bill Vernakes. I live at 2413 Torcross Drive in, in the Clearway-Briarwood neighborhood. We've been there since 1991. I moved back here, actually, I grew up part of the time in Raleigh and part of the time here. I moved back here to take a job at the, as a nurse and nurse's assistant. I moved back here to take a job at the, as a nurse and nurse's at Kefir Valley. And, you know, I feel obviously very, very connected to, to the area. I don't live inside the notification radius, however, I feel like it still concerns me or affects me because I'm, or my wife and I are part of the, a part of the neighborhood. I certainly agree with everything, things that, the, the, the things that have already been said. I'm trying not to be redundant. It was brought to my attention literally at the last minute that a contracting company, Military Standard Construction of 709 Hay Street, was requesting a special use permit. Well, special use to me, my interpretation of special use doesn't coincide with what's requested, but that's just me personally. Anyway, the, the special use permit was for, as you well know, as has been said multiple times, the three, multi-family duplexes. And the short version is, the designated single-family residential neighborhood that's been there from the time construction started, which was roughly 45 to 50 years ago. And after all these years, and God only knows how many contractors have built over there over the decades, and now someone suddenly wants to change the landscape and build what's presumably considered an undesirable parcel in the past. Otherwise, it would have been developed a long time ago, at least in, in my way of thinking it would have been. Technically, yes, it is. Mark is buildable. That is, if you backfill enough, and if you build a retaining wall, or possible retaining wall, and in addition to that, you know, the, the, this thing reaches what appears to be a runoff, and it's been confirmed just from what several people said tonight. Quite honestly, there's, there's quite a few people that, that are not here tonight from the Briarwood-Clearway neighborhood that are up in arms for, for reasons that you, you've heard tonight and, and some of them yet to come. And that's starting with the, the, the tip-off for me was, starting with the placement of the special use sign. You have to see this. I have the pictures if you'd like to see it. It was right in the curve. You can't see the backside. All you see is the front side, and it's backed up to a lot of foliage so that you only see it coming from one direction. A red flag went up, at least for me. The, I can't answer why, why it was put there, but I just know that the message that it, it sends. And, you know, if you go, if you look at the parcel of land, you could have put this thing up the hill in that cleared-out area, so you saw it from both directions, but it was not. So, you didn't know about it until, if you were outside the, the, the notification radius, you didn't know about it unless you were coming from one direction if you happened to see it. So, the bottom line is, and I'll, I'll cut it short because I know some other people want to go ahead and talk also, the bottom line is, there's no reason for this single-family residential, or no, no reason to put this into single-family residential neighborhood, and certainly no, no sense of urgency to do so. And I strongly encourage all of you to devote no. Thank you very much.
Ms. Denise Jasenowski?
Good evening, ma'am. Listening to me. My name is Denise Jasenowski, and I live just off of Colgate Drive on 2613 Sidney Drive, about three blocks away from the Colgate parcel land that's going on. For years now, organizations and conglomerates in the business financial sector such as investment firms, banks, real estate companies, management corporations, construction and rental companies, et cetera, have been buying properties up all over the United States. From 2010 to recent, has been very active. What is being done is they come into older, more established communities because the older building codes regarding a greater land mass was common back then. If you look at new developments going up, the homes are much closer together for single residences, and the property lots are smaller. So, the older neighborhoods are quickly becoming more desirable for builders as you can buy two properties next to each other and build three homes, sometimes four, depending on the size of the lands and the properties and the homes. And in the older, nonhistoric communities, homes that have not been upgraded do sell for less. But if the homes happen to be outdated and inside of them are dilapidated or eaten up by termites or water damages to a certain percentage, property owners can tear them down and start over by getting a land use permit, a special permit for residential, but duplex, triplex. Some duplex doubles that allow four apartments may be authorized. That's a duplex with an upstairs and a downstairs apartments. And they build closer to the frontal property because the land easements have changed now, and then they can build longer. That being said, then people start selling and moving out in those areas because their values have decreased, or they become rental properties and they move out, but they keep their homes. And then you're losing the single-family residents, and the, and the community becomes a transitory one with just renters. And those same companies or other profit companies come in for another scoop up and offer to buy those who want to sell, and they start expanding their reach into more duplexes and apartments within the community. So, what I'm saying is that once you allow one special permit to build, you're opening up the opportunity for others when your homes are starting to dilapitate. And our, a lot of our homes in our community are, you know, 50 years old. Some of them haven't been upgraded. They, we're losing a lot of residents from old age, and their families are coming, or their families are selling their properties for a lower amount, and people are coming in and either kind of demolishing part of the house and rebuilding them and then selling them for profit, which is great. I have nothing against capitalism. But it usually starts kind of slow, and then you start becoming a little bit faster on these people buying up properties within your communities. And then they start spreading out because it's about building more living spaces in the same amount of land. Now, I don't think this would happen here, but if you look about what's going on in the United States, there's a chance that some of these areas down the road in 20, maybe 30 years, become subsidized housing because more governments are needing subsidized housing and apartment livings. So, then you have larger cities like Atlanta, Upstate New York, Seattle, that a possibility for permits for transit busing because it becomes a necessity into the neighborhoods on these major streets within your community. And then you have a few city bus stops along the way. And I don't think, like I said, I don't think that will happen here, but with the way we are going into green energy, electric vehicles, and those are high-end and people are not being able to afford them, then you have special use permits or more low-income housing in the long run, and then you have busing situations into neighborhoods, and then you lose our single-family developments like we have. Now, for these reasons, I stated, I don't want to, I don't want anything other than single-family residences within our community because once you open the floodgates, you may have more. And speaking about the floodgates, that particular plot of land or plats of land, it backs up and then it kind of goes downhill, and back in there, it becomes kind of swampy when we have major hurricanes and storms come through. Now, that parcel of land does set up higher. However, if you start clearing it out with all the tree roots that are holding it in place, like the one gentleman said, you're going to need a retainer wall because otherwise you're going to have land wash, and those homes being, you know, built on there, those people aren't going to know, and they may buy it. Or if he's going to rent them, then you have a transitory area. And there are no sidewalks in our community. People walk the roads. And if you have more people coming in to your residence, your residential areas for single-family housing as apartment living, you have, you have more transport. So, I also wanted to say that back in that area, I don't know how that flood zone is going to work, but I do know there are people who pay upwards $2,500 or $4,000 extra for flood insurance because that's what that area demands back on Rolling Hill and back in that area. Now, there are, there is one other point I'd like to make, is that once you have rezoned an area, there is, as a multifamily dwelling, there's no, there's no legal ramifications for somebody to say, oh, well, now it's been dwell, it's been, is multi-dwelling, and instead of two, I can put three, a block of three homes or three apartments or something. And I got this information off the Coats and Cannon's, North Carolina Local Government Law section dated in 2009, and it says here that if a city or county governing boards considers, considers only a particular proposed project rather than the full range of uses that would be allowed in new zoning district, the courts will invalidate the rezoning if it is challenged in court. However, if an owner promises the governing board that the new zoning would be used only for a particular project, that promise is not binding. Once the property is rezoned, the owner can sell the property and can undertake any use permitted in that new zoning district with any of the 12, 14 considerations that that particular rezoning classification allows.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, this is not a rezoning, this is a special use permit?
Yeah. So, trying to give a little, little leeway with, with our testimony, it needs to be pertaining to this specific project. I know, so if you can get back to this particular one without.
Well, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Clayton Giliard?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Council?
Again, I know you, you've just heard a lot of comments regarding this special use permit. I've, I live on 2406 Colgate Drive, Fayetteville. Love Fayetteville. Again, prior military service, Army. The neighborhood, yes, it's a great neighborhood, single-family dwelling. Someone mentioned, we do have some townhomes, office, you know, complexes and so forth in our neighborhood. Now, this parcel of land, I would say if it was fit to be developed into a duplex, someone would have done it years ago. It's low land. If you remember Hurricane Matthews, all the flooding, I will tell you, on Colgate Drive, where I live, I saw the water just flowing down. I walked down my driveway around that curve, and I saw the water just gushing over down to that parcel of land. So, I know that's the low land. Water follows the path of least resistance. So, if someone wanted to build that land or that property up years ago, they would have. And I know also you have wildlife in that area too. But again, I just don't understand why someone would want to bill on that parcel. It will take a lot of money to bill up that land. As someone mentioned already, runoff, the power, the power line, all of these issues that I see. But what concerns me most is the flooding. That water is going somewhere. Right now, it's moving toward that parcel. It will go to someone else's yard, someone else's area. That's what's going to happen. I oppose building duplexes on that parcel of land. You've heard my neighbors' great comments, great neighbors, single-family dwelling. I love it. I love the neighborhood. I love Fayetteville. But I would say in that area where we are and on that parcel of land, it's not really suited for duplexes. Even if you wanted to build single-family homes there, I would say you're taking a major risk, a major risk. But if it's approved, single-family dwelling, again, it's his buck. It's on him. He'll suffer the consequences because I've seen the water, and I know that area floods. Thank you for listening to me. Have a great day.
Mr. Michael Hall?
My name is Michael Hall. I live at 2003 Bismarck Court. I've been a Fayetteville resident since 1963. I've been a Briarwood-Clearway homeowner since 1986. My parents lived and died in their homes in the Briarwood-Clearway neighborhood. My wife's parents lived and died in their homes in the Briarwood-Clearway neighborhood. My daughter and her husband purchased their home in the Briarwood-Clearway community. It's a special place for us. I come to you this evening with a, a different perspective, not only as a proud Fayetteville resident, lifelong resident, but as a proud homeowner in the Briarwood-Clearway neighborhood. Our, our neighbors take a lot of pride in our neighborhood. We, we come together, Village Drive Avenue, we come together, we pay to have that mode and edge because sometimes our city just can't get to it. We have our Briarwood-Clearway Garden Club who takes care of our community entrances. So, it's, it's a special place for a lot of us, generational for me. You see, our, our neighborhood is special to us because it's a, a community that you've seen on TV, like Mayberry. We're, yes. It's families raising families in single-family residential homes. It's neighbors being neighbors. It's not a transient community like you would have in multifamily housing. It's over 50 years of families, leaders in our communities, contributors to our community, serving our community to make Fayetteville a better place to live. So, will a solely-for-profit business venture of multifamily housing in our Briarwood-Clearway community, our neighborhood, will it increase the values that our neighbors cherished and worked so hard for over the years? Would it increase the value of our homes? On the contrary, I think we all know that that won't happen. But I, all of us can think of, are well aware of areas in our community that if we're looking for this type of housing, then Mark and his construction company can go in these areas. Maybe Mark won't make as much money, but he can contribute to the multifan, to the housing dilemma in our community, not in our neighborhood, but go where it's more needed to pull up those neighbors in those communities instead of coming into our community and pulling our community down and our home values down. So, Mayor, council members, I, I plead for your vote against rescinding our, not only our restrictive covenants, but what we have worked so hard for over the last 50 years. Thank you.
Ms. Nicole Graham?
So, as Ms. Graham, Mr. Herring, and
So as Ms. Graham, Mr. Herring, and Ms. Fernandez come, I think are the last three speakers, please make sure that the testimony you give is pertaining to this and not repetitive. I know we've heard it, so I have to limit any repetitive, but I understand your passion about it. But being, this is sworn testimony, try to make sure that we are hitting different points on this particular case, but thank you.
Sure. Well, I'm Nicole Graham. I live at 2600 Cottingham Court, and I'm nervous being up here, but, you know, I'm here anyway. Because this is like a passionate issue. To be brief, a lot I have on here has already been said, so... But, let's see. Something that I had noted was a concern that Colgate practically connects, like visually, to the roads of Eldoro and Enterprise Avenue. And those roads then lead to Owen Drive. So it's actually just a short little piece. If there was potentially a road put between those duplexes, because there's two in one area and like one on the other, there seems to be enough room if there was a road put between those. That could potentially extend Colgate all the way into the other subdivision that would lead out to Owen, which could potentially turn Colgate into a high-traffic area. I did see that public buses also travel on those roads, and would that also impact the neighborhood is another question I would have about that. Colgate then goes all the way to the end where I live, I live on the other end of the neighborhood, which then connects to, is like really close to where Stone Bridge is, the back end of Stone Bridge. And so that seems like that could potentially...
Well, Ms. Graham, we can't do speculation, so just...
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, I'm feeling like that opens up a Pandora's Box to turn those into, opening those two duplexes. It opens up the possibility. So, and, let's see. Other than that, again, yeah, it doesn't fit. We have single houses off of Colgate also, and they're specific on smaller parcels, and it seems like putting those duplexes would encourage splitting up those land parcels, which would be tragic. And then I had another question that was given to me, that if, let's say, they were put there, there's a new road that's being paved right now on Colgate. If they put those there, would that damage those roads after the road has been paved? And then who would be, who would have to pay for the damage to the newly paved road? So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris Herring.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, how are you all? So you come at the end, they pretty well covered everything, right? I'll say this, it took us a while to get here too. My wife and I are teachers, and we wanted to move in the neighborhood years ago. It took us some saving and stuff to get there, and we've been there about 13 years. I'm on 2421 Torcross Drive. I'm going to completely agree with everything my neighbors are saying. The only thing I'm going to add is traffic concerns. There's three primary entrances. One's directly across, Briarmeier has no stoplight. It's off of Village, pretty much directly across from St. Pass Catholic Church. The second one, so there's a school zone. Not only do you have the, you know, big church leading in and out, but you have a school zone there. The second one's a stoplight where we've had a series of accidents over the years. I have a teen driver, so I warned her about Purdue at Village Drive, that particular stoplight. So I'm concerned that you might potentially open a Pandora's Box when you do something special like this, bringing in more increase of traffic, where we really, we're sort of busting, it seems, traffic-wise in the neighborhood. The third entrance is on Fordham. It's directly across from where Dart Branch used to breathe. You have businesses there, and you have a neighborhood. So you have dual neighborhoods exiting at that stoplight. So, you know, I'm a little bit more concerned on the traffic front, and also want to bring it to my neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, our final speaker for this item is Ms. Alyssa Fernandez.
Thank you.
Ms. Alyssa Fernandez? Not present. We have no further speakers, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir, you have to have signed up, and it's kind of different rules for this quasi, so I apologize. Are you Ms. Fernandez, ma'am?
I called and left a message, and I never got a call back. And so did this woman beside me. We both also called and did not get, it was Abigail or Gail at 433 1989. We called and left a message.
Okay. Well, right now, we can't verify it, so I apologize. So I'm going to have to close the evidentiary hearing. With that, we have questions. Mayor Protim Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harmon, are you still here? Hey, there he is. Okay, so if this special use permit gets denied, how many houses can the property owner build?
Again, this is 10,000 square foot lots.
Could he get five on there?
No, no, he would not be able to get five onto that. I think that there would be three, I believe, is in the calculation.
Okay, because you've got a PWC easement, then you've got...
That's the biggest thing, is trying to fit things in with that power easement.
All right. And can the owner bring in dirt and build up, and for instance, build a retention wall at his cost to add more square footage?
If you look at the, I don't know if it's still up on your computer screens, the site plan that's there.
Yep.
What you can see there is these little lines through here are the setbacks. So once you factor in the setbacks along with your, that power easement going through here, it's very limited space. They're basically, these lots, they're basically taking up the only spaces available to build on those two lots.
Okay, so a total of three houses?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. That's all my questions. Mr. Mayor?
All right, council, any other questions? Councilmember Thompson, and then Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for Mrs. Brantley, I believe it was. And my question would be is, who enforces the Code of Covenants? How did he purchase the property? And who is the realtor that sold him the property without him looking at the Code of Covenants, restricted covenants?
That I wouldn't know, because I'm a homeowner, I'm not the person who purchased the land. The covenants are on file at the courthouse. I went down and got them for my section and for Section 4. I have maps. I also know from looking at the maps that the land in question ends at the 500-year floodline. So areas at the back of that lot, or those lots, and some of the neighboring lots, did flood during Michael, and possibly during Florence.
Thank you, ma'am. So my other question, I guess, would be for the owner-applicant. When he purchased the property, did the realtor show him the Code of Covenants of what he could and could not build on that property?
Yes, I'm aware. So my argument is that they're 1,100 per side, so it's 2,200 square feet within the 1,700 of their covenants. So I feel I'm within their covenants.
So...
Please keep your comments down.
Let me get this straight. So the covenants told you that single-family housing had to be 1,700 square feet, but you decided to make two or three out of 1,100 square feet?
They said the dwelling has to be 1,700 square feet, and the dwelling's 2,200 square feet, plus the garage.
For two.
So like 2,300 per?
For two, correct.
For two, for the duplex, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Benavente.
I was prepared to make a motion, sir.
All right. Councilmember Mahndros.
This is more of a legal question. I think if Madam Attorney maybe can help us. We talked about restrictive covenants and also the special use permit. If we were to approve this tonight and they conflict, which document controls the restrictive covenants or the special use permit?
Well, the city is not in the, we don't enforce restrictive covenants. So this is a special use permit which requires the eight findings of fact. One of those findings of fact is that the proposed development must be in harmony with the existing development. I don't know that you've received any testimony from the applicant to confirm that the proposed development would be consistent. But again, the city would not be in the business of enforcing the restrictive covenant.
So follow-up question. So then the residents' concerns or their recourse would be legal action then to enforce the covenants, if that's what they chose?
If there is a violation of any restrictive covenants, it would be up to the residents to bring a legal action to enforce the violation.
Thank you. I have a question of the, Mr. Mayor. Actually, two. Sir, do you know by chance if any of this, any of the two parcels or the parcel there is in the 100-year flood zone?
It is not in a flood zone.
None of it, not even a portion of it?
None of it is in, no. The very, they are correct, the very edge of it is in a flood zone, but none of the property, not one millimeter that I own, is in the flood zone.
And if this special use permit is not approved this evening, do you know how many, based on your engineers, have they discussed with you a potential, how many other structures you can put on this?
I mean, just to be clear, so the traffic, I'm going to build four, three or four single-family homes, and they're not going to be of equal value to what I'm building in the duplexes, it'll be of lesser value.
So you think, okay, you're thinking you could build three or four homes?
I can build four, I'm pretty sure, but three for sure. Because, and just to explain, the duplexes are 93 feet wide. Another plan that I have, single-family that I'm building and scrambling off of Rosehill right now, is 62 feet wide on the front. So 62 front, that's about a third smaller than these. So for sure, three, but I think I could do four.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions? Can you, whoever's controlling the board, can you put back up the eight findings of facts that are on our packet? Mr. Harmon? All right, so council, this is an evidentiary hearing. As you know, we are required during these quasi-judicials to take sworn testimony and to make a decision based on these findings. Councilmember Benavente, you had a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny this permit.
All right.
I second, Mr. Mayor.
Is a motion by Councilmember Benavente, seconded by Councilmember Thompson, discussion? And that motion is to deny? Question?
As we have chosen to deny, I do believe, Madam Attorney, we do have to select...
Uh-uh.
No?
That's if you, you know, when you approve it, you have to repeat that.
Oh, but when we deny?
No.
Okay.
All right. So any other discussion on the motion? This motion is to deny said application. All right?
I'm sorry, no. Madam Attorney, that has, it has to change.
I'm sorry.
From my understanding...
Repeat your question.
My question is, when we are to deny, we have to select a finding of fact based on which we are denying, or multiple, but when we are to approve, we are approving on all findings of facts. But when we are to deny, we must select one or more findings of facts of which we have denied the request.
Yes, so your motion includes the basis upon which you either approve, as in the eight have been found, or you deny based on not having found any one of the seven, excuse me, eight findings of fact?
Correct. And I guess I was missing the verbiage that went with it, because in past, when we, you've expressed that we need to state what.
Yes.
And so it was just a plain motion, which confused me.
Thank you. And yes, so the maker of the motion, as well as the seconded, will need to articulate the basis for the disapproval. Mr. Benavente?
I can give more detail. I move that we do not approve this use of permit, specifically because findings two, four, excuse me, two, five, and seven were not met.
Go ahead and articulate two, expound, deny based on...
Certainly. We heard today that the character of the surrounding land and the current uses permitted are for single-family homes. Haven't heard...
Proposed uses is incompatible.
The proposed, thank you, Madam Attorney, the proposed uses are incompatible with the character of the surrounding lands. Thank you. I'll go on to say that a lot of the environmental concerns have made me feel as though number five has not been met as well. And then finally, as it relates to protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop, is also a concern that has been raised adequately today.
All right, so the motion has stated, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Any further discussion on the motion? Council, look to you for your votes that says to deny. Those in favor of the deny motion, show of hands. All right. Madam Clerk, that motion to deny, Councilmember Benavente, Jensen, Colvin, Dawkins, Hare, Thompson, Ingram, those opposed to deny, show of hands. Councilmember Mahndros McNair, is that your hand? Which way are you voting?
She voted to deny.
She voted to deny, okay. So Mahndros and Banks-McLaughlin. So motion to deny carries eight to two. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, eight to two, to deny.
All right. Thank you. All right, 10.01 was... All right, so we'll give a moment to clear, and we'll come up on 10.02, Ms. Baptiste, as soon as that clears up.
Mr. Mayor, are we taking a break? Okay. I know my stuff now.
I know my stuff now.
Go to recess. We were just giving a moment for the room to clear. So we're coming up on item ten point, we'll give, we'll give another two minutes for those to clear, but then we'll move to item ten point oh two. Ms. Baptiste, please, you can come to the podium.
Good evening again. Don't need an escort. Yeah, sure.
Ms. Baptiste, it's on you. Councilman, we're back, we're back in session, yeah?
Good evening again. This is my last case for the evening. This is text amendment twenty-two dash zero four. It's to the special use permit section of the U D O. The requested change is to amend section thirty dash two point A, thirty point two that point B, and thirty point two that, dot C. Making additional changes to the special use permit process.
Mr. Mayor, I do apologize. We do need to, because the item is on the agenda, we do need to address that item ten point zero one. The applicant requested that that item be pulled.
Okay, yeah, so counsel, the previous case that was ten point oh one would have been requesting annexation was denied, so we need a motion to, what, remove that or table it?
Mayor Colvin?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we remove item ten point zero one from our agenda.
Okay, that's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Benevente to remove ten point oh one due to relevance. Any discussion? Those in favor of the removal? All right, yeah, Benevente, all right, thank you. Ms. Baptiste?
The objective is to clarify the special use permit process. This came about as a suggestion from outside counsel to the city to make additional changes in addition to the changes that were done under chapter one sixty D that was seen by the board earlier this year. One clarifying item is to remove from the zoning commission's powers and duties special use, the special use permit process. Another change is under the evidentiary hearing. This will place more of the burden of proof, not on the city, but on the parties to show that the standards have not been met by the applicant. Another, this, additional changes have been requested to thirty dash two point C point seven, the special use permit process itself, to clarify that staff and the technical review committee are to both review the special use permit and make suggestions or revisions. Another change is to thirty dash two point C, the procedures, and to clarify this is in, that all, the special use permit shall be issued, shall issue the permit to the applicant in accordance to the city council's decision. Further clarification would also be added to the special permit standards, which are the standards that the special use permit complies with all applicable standards, conditions, and specification in the ordinance. The special use will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The special use will be, will not materially endanger the public health or safety. The special use is in general conformity with the city's adopted land use plan. The special use will not substantially injure the value of a budding property. The special use shall comply with other relevant city, state, and federal laws. And the effect, the effect of approval, the special use permit shall authorize only the particular special use and associated development that is approved by the permit. Staff, staff and the planning, planning board are recommending that city council adopt the proposed tech, staff text amendment. That is staff's presentation. If you have any questions, we ask that you hold, hold them until after you close your public hearing. Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Now, we have no speakers for this item.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins?
Motion to recommend adoption of proposed staff text amendment.
All right, all right, this is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins to adopt staff recommended text amendment, seconded by Councilmember Hair. Discussion on the motion to accept. All right, counsel, look to you for your votes. Those in favor of the accept? Madam Clerk, is she unanimous? Motion carries. Item eleven point oh one, this item was a reconsideration item for a previous meeting that instructed the manager to execute the gunshot, shot spotter detection system.
Mayor Colvin, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we table this item so that we can take it to a work session in order to establish a series of town halls or public forums related to this particular contract, and I'll have more to say during discussion.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Mahondros. Discussion on the motion to table which work session, sir?
October.
Okay, all right, any discussion on the motion?
I do have a question. So are, so we're asking to reconsider and have the conversation to move it forward in October, but it's also being paired with the ask of to have town halls and community meetings on this. Do we have the capacity to do it within that timeframe, town halls and meetings?
My request specifically is that during the work session, we can work through exactly what a schedule looks like, whether it's one town hall, whether it's several, when that would be exactly, and when the counsel would then want to say that, hey, we've heard not just from the community about this issue, but we've also listened to not just one side of the shot spotter discussion. I think thus far, we've only heard from shot spotter in official capacity. I think it's important that counsel listen to the negatives, the potential negatives of this particular technology. And I'll reserve the rest of my comments for discussion, or my time for discussion.
So, and just so I can make sure I'm tracking, we, it's just that the town halls along with the, the schedule kind of threw me off. So I'm tracking that we will in work session get a presentation from the opposite side of shot spotter and have discussion on how to move forward, community dialogue.
I think that's a great suggestion. I think all I'm asking for is a public forum. I think that there is a group by the name of Campaign Zero that is known probably to most of the folks in the viewing audience for the ones who developed the Eight Can't Wait line of public safety improvements. And if this counsel would like that presentation, that the first term folks got from them, I think that would be a great idea.
Councilmember Benevente, I wasn't, I wasn't.
Councilmember Ingram, hold on, please. We have a motion on the floor, discussion.
But I'm, I'm trying to get clarity, please, and I have the floor.
This, during discussion.
I have the floor.
Councilmember Ingram.
What I was asking was.
Councilmember Ingram.
I wasn't making a, a suggestion. I was asking a question on what you were asking for your motion.
Councilmember Ingram, this is discussion phase. This is not a question phase for him. So if it's a discussion, Jermaine to the motion that's on the floor, that has a second on the floor, please do that. Now, you went two rounds of questioning.
Councilmember Benevente, I was not making a suggestion. I was trying to get clarity on your motion. You stated I made a suggestion. I wasn't making a suggestion. I'm trying to get clarity on your path for this motion.
On the floor to take this to a work session, and also had been mentioned to discuss town hall meetings. That was the motion that was read, that was the motion that was seconded. That is the motion on the floor. If there's a counter motion, it either has to be amended or we have to dispose of this motion. Discussion phase is where we are. Councilmember Mahondros?
If I may, I think some of these questions or, or ideas we were thinking we would talk about in the work session for whatever that's worth.
All right, any other discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify.
Okay.
So the motion is to refer this to the work session?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so motion on the floor is to refer to a work session. Round two, sir?
Well, I guess, oh, yes, that's fine. So to my fellow members of counsel, I think we're all under a lot of pressure to do something important and worthwhile as it relates to improving public safety. And I think that direction should be in investing in our communities, not necessarily investing in private corporations. So I think that it's important that we give the opportunity to the chief of police's staff to answer what Chief Hawkins could not answer the last time this was up. What are the potential negatives to this technology? I'll give them an opportunity to answer that. I've emailed Chief Hawkins to see if she would clarify even outside after that meeting. I've yet to receive a response. And the reason that this question is so important is because if we implement this contract, if we sign on the dotted line, we inherit all the potential liability. We learned that in the contract, it says specifically, Shot Spotter Corporation waives all liability. And we've seen in other communities that that has resulted in lawsuits against cities and municipalities. So I'm not interested in us looking at different technologies like this in a one-size-fits-all fashion. If we want to make it work here in Fayetteville, let's learn from the mistakes that other municipalities have gone through. Let's make sure that we're not manufacturing consent for the police to overpolice certain neighborhoods. Let's make sure that we're not violating people's Fourth Amendment rights. And let's also make sure that we're getting the data back to make sure this is actually a viable company. Because one thing we've learned in the way that shot spotter has existed elsewhere is that nine-one-one calls capture all the same information and actually outperforms shot spotter. So we may be paying two hundred thousand dollars for what is ultimately a redundant technology. And that two hundred thousand dollars is better invested in our communities and not necessarily with a private corporation. So if anyone in the Fayetteville Police Department staff could speak to any of the negatives that they've learned about, that'd be great.
All right, counsel, all right. So those in favor of the denial or to take this to a work session, which is a motion on the floor, those in favor, show of hands. Yes, ma'am.
Just a question, just to be clear. So this is, your motion is to send it to a work session? Okay.
All right, all right, all right, those in favor of the motion? Show of hands. All right, all right, those opposed? All right, so motion, motion fails four to six. Those voting in favor were Councilmember Mahondros, Benevente, Ingram, and Banks McGlaughlin. And those voting in favor were the other six. All right.
Mr. Mayor, we need a, the motion was to reconsider, so now we need a motion. And so as a result of the motion to reconsider, staff needs a definitive direction on moving this contract forward.
So if the motion to reconsider was to bring it back and.
The motion on the floor was to table this and send it to a work session.
All right.
So at this point, we need a motion to either approve the.
Mr. Mayor, I motion we approve the spot shot program.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Thompson to.
Authorize the execution of the spot shot.
Is there a second?
Contract.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins.
I couldn't hear. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, there's a lot of conversation going on, guys. There's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim, to approve the execution of the contract, which was the original direction to the, to the manager. Discussion on that motion? No. Is there discussion, discussion on the motion on the floor? This motion is to give the original direction that was originally voted on to the manager to move forward. All right, those in favor of the motion, show of hands. All right, those, those opposed? All right, all right, so it's five to five. So.
Make your motion.
All right. So counsel, motion to adjourn?
Mayor Colvin, don't we have another item?
What other item? Huh, what other item, sir? No, that was administrative.
Those are reports.